Good evening and welcome, and thank you for being with us tonight. I will call this meeting of Montgomery County School Board to orders 7 o'clock on Monday, the 7th of 2019. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Next, our student school board representatives will now read our mission, vision, and core value statements, which that will be their last time with us. They are both seniors and graduating, and we really enjoy having them a part of our board, so go for it, guys.
We would like to welcome all of our guests to our school board meeting tonight. Here in Montgomery County Schools, our mission is that every student will graduate career and college-ready and become a productive, responsible citizen. Our mission, our vision is to inspire learning by providing a nurturing environment, positive relationships, high expectations, and continuous growth.
Here in Montgomery County Schools, our values for everyone include physical safety and emotional well-being, mutual trust and respect, open communication, accountability, engagement in lifelong learning, and cultural diversity. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, both of you. Next item will be adopting our agenda. May I have a motion to adopt our agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next item will be our superintendent, Dr. Meyer's announcements. Dr. Meyer.
Alright, thanks. Good evening to everyone. We've had a lot going on the last couple of weeks. A lot of great things have been happening in our schools. Would like to thank the Blacksburg High School Culinary Arts Class. They provided breakfast for the Great Montgomery Liaison Group a couple of weeks ago, and that group consists of the government leaders in the area and as well as us, and the breakfast was absolutely amazing. Our culinary programs at both Christiansburg and Blacksburg High Schools do an absolutely wonderful job. Last week, we had what we call Career Signing Day, and you know, all of our high schools have a signing day for athletes who are going off to attend college and participate in sports. Something we have started is a Career Signing Day for students who are, some are going straight into the workforce after leaving high school because we've trained them, and they have various licenses where they're able to do that. Some are going to New River to continue their trade, and some are going into the military. And so last week, we were able to recognize those individuals, and I think our biggest group that we graduated were CNAs. How many CNAs did we graduate? Thirty CNAs. So that's amazing, incredible, and they are marketable right now in terms of being able to get jobs, and so very exciting. Blacksburg Middle High Spring Concert was last week for the band. Absolutely amazing, our arts programs and our band programs and our school division and how accomplished they've been. I'd like to thank the Blacksburg Police Department. Something they do every year for our fifth graders is, at the end of the year, they bring the fifth graders together from all the Blacksburg Elementary Schools so they can get to know each other prior to going to Blacksburg Middle School. And they have a lot of fun. They actually make them mix up into different teams from different schools. They buy them t-shirts. They gave away ten bikes for the best citizens in those schools, and so that was an absolutely wonderful day as well. And also, theater is alive and well in Montgomery County. Blacksburg High School did Mamma Mia, and that was incredible, absolutely incredible. Not too short of Broadway, I promise you that. Unbelievable. And yet, you can say that. In fact, I think I saw one of the leads in the audience, but anyway, yeah. And then Blacksburg Middle School, this past weekend, did a few productions of Willy Wonka, and I went to the sixth grade production of Willy Wonka because I have a sixth grader, and she was on the lights, and the lights were perfect, you know? She didn't mess a thing up, so it was just awesome. So a lot of things happening. Of course, as we end the school year, there are a lot of, we have a lot of athletic events going on, a lot of award ceremonies, and so I encourage everyone to get out and support your students in these schools during this time, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Next item on our agenda is our honors, awards, and recognitions, and first item will be our student representatives sharing their reports from their schools. I don't know who wants to go first, but guys decide.
So of course, we're starting AP exams and SOLs this week, and Blue Demon Time is still going on for students who are just getting the last-minute review for the SOLs and AP exams if they don't have SOLs. This weekend, we have The Newsies, the musical, which is gonna be big, and it's gonna be, I think it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Our baseball team is doing well, and our men's lacrosse team had a big win over Blacksburg last night, so that was good. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
I'm going to reserve my report for the presentation.
Okay.
Okay. Very good.
So the next item will be our school presentation, I believe.
Absolutely, and every meeting, we have a school present, something great happening in their schools, and tonight it's Eastern Montgomery High School, and Assistant Principal Mr. McDaniel is going to lead that presentation, students.
Good evening. Last summer, Mr. Knott and I discussed different types of schedules that would include incorporating remediation time, club meeting time, more physical activity into the daily schedule at EMHS. A teacher had shared an article about a school in North Carolina that was using the Power Hour model. At first, I was hesitant because of the amount of freedom and autonomy that the students were given, but the more that I thought, the more I realized that when students go to college, they have large amounts of time outside of the class, that they have to learn how to manage on their own, and when students enter the workforce, they will have a work schedule that will drive their daily activities, but outside of that work, they will have the creativity to weave other things into their day as well. Through this schedule, time management is an important life skill that we are able to teach. This evening, we'd like to share a small snapshot of how Power Hour has become an important part of Eastern Montgomery High School. Power Hour occurs each day and is broken into two 30-minute blocks, A-time and B-time is what we call them. We have created a schedule that gives students options on how they can use their time effectively. Teachers offer 30-minute tutoring blocks multiple times throughout the week. There are also club meetings scheduled during this time. The weight room is open three days a week. We have walking club that meets every day, and intramural sports are played in a tournament style where players or teams are placed in a bracket and assigned playing times. The schedule can look very busy, but we keep the same schedule, same weekly schedule for the entire semester so that students and staff quickly learn when clubs meet and when tutoring times are offered. I'd like to now turn it over to some of our students that are gonna tell you how they feel about our Power Hour.
Hello. As most of you know, I'm Brett Smith, a senior at Eastern Montgomery High School. I would just like to say that Power Hour has had a profound effect on the morale and productivity of the school as a whole. Personally, it has allowed me to be more involved in clubs and has given me time in the day to alleviate some of the stress that AP and DE classes can bring on. As president of the Environmental Science Club, it gave me time to be able to manage and plan the Environmental Science Club's March beach trip. Power Hour has truly given students the chance to go beyond the basic standards of high school education and has allowed them to enrich the school day in an extent not met before. I'm now gonna show you a video. Alright, so this here is a list of some of the clubs that we offer. I'm gonna leave that up there for y'all to read, but I would just like to say that we are not limited in any way to this list. We constantly take in student feed, like input, and we'd like to give them feedback on what clubs they would like to have offered and what clubs we can offer, and I just think it's a really important part of the day that really gets students involved. I'm gonna turn it over to Leslie.
Hello. My name is Leslie Lopez, and I'm a junior at EMHS, and this year, Power Hour was introduced here at Eastmont, and so far, it has really worked. The way that I use it is that I use Power Hour to help out with yearbook because I'm part of the yearbook staff, and right now, we just got the yearbooks, so I'm organizing them to hand out to students at our annual picnic. And while I was playing sports in the winter, we would like have really late practices and would come home really late from our games, and sometimes when I was trying to do my homework, I couldn't really finish, especially with the E classes. I would be falling asleep like around 1:00 a.m. sometimes and then having to wake up like at 7:00 and then having to go to school, and if I didn't finish, I knew that I would have a Power Hour to finish my assignment, and that way, I could keep my grade up in that class. I also use it to go to math practice for history for the upcoming season so we can be better, and at the beginning of the school year, I only knew my peers and like my classmates, and I didn't know any of the underclassmen, and while I'm in my yearbook teacher's room, a lot of freshmen come in there, and I made some new friends, and sometimes they ask me like about what classes they should take that would help them do better, and I've made new friends, and it's really fun. It's a really great way to explore and make new friends, and so far, our community at the high school has been better. For tutoring, I will use it sometimes, like if I'm taking my math class, just in case I didn't really understand how to do my work, I'll go back to my teacher's classroom and then I'll just ask them and try to review sometimes before tests. And then intramurals is really fun because some people, they don't really like playing sports, but like if you go to intramurals, you can be like on a team, you can try to win, make new friendships. That's how I'm one of my good friends right now. And then the weight room is really fun because like if you do track or like other sports, sometimes you really can't make to the practices due to personal reasons, and it's a good way to talk to your coach and then try to go to the weight room and do your workout there so that they can excuse your absence at practice, and walking club is honestly one of like the best clubs that we have because every student participates, and we have like the best outcome. And that's it.
That's wonderful.
Any questions?
Thank you for sharing.
I'd just like to make a comment. Ms. Parkin and I actually came down and saw, and it was really neat, and you know, one of the things when we were talking about school times and things like that, a lot of the research that I did was talking about students that were sharing that it kinda doesn't matter what time it is because the class loads are so heavy now, there's no downtime, there's no time to get caught up, just exactly like what you were saying, and having three children that came through the system, I saw it. And so this is what I think is just perfect because it gives those extra few minutes if you need to finish homework instead of staying up till 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. And you know, one real neat thing, last Saturday, we had two or three families from all the different schools getting hair done for proms and haircuts, and I was listening, and they were talking about Power Hour, and the students that were there were going, "Oh, we love it, it's so great, we do this and we do that," so it's a success.
It's wonderful, and especially for the athletes. I mean, you know, game times are starting later, they're getting back late on away games, and it gives them a chance to get their stuff done and maybe explore new things that they never thought they'd be interested in because they didn't have the time. So you guys are doing phenomenal.
Yeah, thank you. That's wonderful.
I will say that there's a video in the packet that you all have, we cut out because of time, so please check that out, that's what our teachers feel about it.
Sure. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, Dr. Graham will come up as we continue with our awards and recognitions.
We have several awards and recognitions tonight, and we are gonna begin with a student school board representative recognition, and for that, Dr. Meyer will come to the podium.
Alright, so two years ago, we decided to add student school board reps to our school board, and it's been an absolutely wonderful experience the last two years. You know, in conjunction with this, we also started a superintendent's advisory that consists of a middle schooler from each middle school, or an eighth grader, and then four 11th graders, and then the four 12th graders are actually participants, and so they've done an absolutely wonderful job. And so board members tonight, we get to recognize our student school board representatives, student reps, if you guys please come down. Two are not here tonight, Leanne Vega-Berg and Kayla Fing from Auburn, and then Blacksburg. Ty Kwak and Brett Smith have represented their schools as student school board representatives this school year. This group has represented, represents the second school year that the school board has had official student voice. There is no denying that the students have made a positive contribution to our discussion as a school board and to the lives of students in Montgomery County. They have represented their schools and our school division with passion and pride. So first, Ty Kwak, representing Christiansburg High School. Ty Ballance being a student school board member with participation in the Governor's School, serving as the drum major for the CHS marching band, senior class president, president of the National Honor Society, president of Hostel, president in FCA, Beta Club, Y Street, leader, leadership mentor team, and the CHS wrestling team. Next year, Ty will be attending Virginia Tech. Next, Brett Smith represented Eastern Montgomery High School this year. In addition to being a student school board member, Brett served as an intern in our technology department, participated in the school's MAC team, Scholastic Bowl team, and Interact Club. He is president of the Environmental Science Club, vice president of the Beta Club, and is the senior rep on student government. Next year, Brett will also be attending Virginia Tech. So thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
If Mr. Mefford would come forward, Mr. Mefford is the principal of Margaret Beeks Elementary School, and he's gonna share with us a presentation of the Margaret Beeks Brainstormers.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come and recognize our student group this evening. I'd like to call forward the Brainstormers leaders, Mr. Joey Ballard, Ms. Lindy Lohanes, and Ms. Helen Fotinos. Alright, Beeks Brainstormers, if you would please join us up here, I'll introduce you. They did get more than a t-shirt out of this, I promise. Anyway, we have Mr. Owen Fotinos, Ms. Miriam Redding, Ms. Kami Jones, Ms. Elizabeth Driscoll, Ms. Charlotte Munsel, Mr. Ryan Clopfer, and Mr. Nate Means, they're on the end. These students have been meeting twice a week all year. Destination Imagination was a club we started last year at Margaret Beeks, and we've reformed a team each year, and they placed very well in their first competition, but they came back knowing that they could do more and got ready, and I'm gonna let the leader share a little bit more about how the state competition went, so.
Hi, thanks so much for having us here this evening, we're so proud of our students. This year, the students chose the Service Learning Challenge, so through that, they created a service project for our community. They decided to collect supplies and raise money for the animal shelter. We also went to the animal shelter and did some volunteering, and then for our tournament, they had to create a play, an eight-minute play about their service project with suspense and clues, and they just did a fantastic job. They placed third place in the state in that, in that competition. The students also had to participate in a STEM challenge, so it was sort of a mystery challenge. They went in, they had five minutes to show what they, what they knew, and the students placed first place in that challenge, so we are very proud of their hard work. So we did come home with some hardware. Thank you for your time.
I just wanna make two more notes, because what they didn't mention is they did qualify for Globals in Kansas City. We're not necessarily prepared for that, but we will be prepared for their success in the future, and I do believe they placed first in the pop-up STEM challenge, and I think that is directly correlated to the innovation they're seeing in the classroom, that they were able to do that on the spot. So thank you for those opportunities and for having us here tonight.
If Mr. Pauley would come forward, he's director of secondary education, and he will introduce to us the May Seniors of the Month program.
Thank you, Dr. Graham, Dr. Meyer, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's always a special highlight of our board meeting to recognize a senior of the month from each of our four high schools. As you know, photos and leadership profiles are displayed on the presentation board in the lobby. Our presentation format provides a snapshot of each senior and a quote from their administrator or teacher who nominated them for this recognition. It's my pleasure to present each of the four principals from the four high schools, Mr. Chris Stewart from Auburn High School, Adam Simpson, Assistant Principal from Blacksburg High School, Tony Dibler, Principal of Christiansburg High School, and Danny Knott, Principal of Eastern Montgomery High School. We'll start with Mr. Stewart, and they will each come up one after the other. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Graham, Dr. Meyer. It's my pleasure to present to you the May Senior of the Month at Auburn High School, Holden Trimmer. Holden is here tonight with his parents and his sister Jessica. I'd like to invite his whole family to come up and join me. I'd like to take just a moment and read a statement from one of Holden's teachers. "Inside and outside of class, I have seen Holden be compassionate and kind to all members of the school. Despite a courteous and humble nature, he is genuinely ambitious and intelligent spirit when committed to academic work and when interacting with both peers and adults alike. He is reliable, responsible, and has the talent for taking complicated tasks and finishing them with excellence and relative ease. During class discussions, he usually is one of the first to deliver deeply thought-out and insightful remarks when given difficult and demanding questions. On essays, he proves himself to comprehend unfamiliar material and concepts and demonstrated a remarkable ability to communicate ideas clearly with little guidance. One of Holden's most distinguished traits is his ability to lead. Whenever students approach me as a class to discuss a matter, he's among the first to come to speak with me. He always gave well-reasoned and mannerly arguments when representing his peers. His silent leadership has helped foster a greater sense of community for his class. Moreover, Holden has a wonderful sense of humor and can hold a conversation and make them smile in just about any situation. He demonstrates prominent leadership and plays an integral part in both athletic and extracurricular activities. Lastly, what is vastly more crucial in any leadership role is accountability. Holden is humble, always the first to admit when he is wrong or if he has made a mistake, and puts forward every effort for self-improvement." Congratulations, Holden. Good evening, Dr. Meyer, Dr. Graham, members of the board. It's my pleasure to announce two seniors of the month, one for April, one for May. So we're gonna start with our senior of the month for April is Unmisha Vilakanti. If you could come up, Unmisha. I believe mom is on her way back and dad is out of the country, correct? So here's what one of your teachers had to say about you. "Unmisha is an incredibly driven young lady who has taken practically every science class offered at BHS. She has taken AP Chemistry, AP Biology, AP Physics, as well as independent student research. Her research work titled, 'Can the Use of PNAs to Inhibit Specific Gene Expression Hinder the Growth of Salmonella Typhimurium?'" Can it? "Her project took the Intel International Science and Engineering Fair as well as the American Junior Academy of Science Meeting. Her tremendous success is a reflection of her dedication to science, and I know that she will be a wonderful reflection of Blacksburg High School as she ventures into her future career. Next year, she plans to attend University of Virginia. Congratulations." And Blacksburg High School Senior of the Month for the month of May is Jackson Bowles. Can you come on up, Jackson, along with family members? Here's what one of your teachers had to say about you, Jackson. "Jackson is a fourth-year drafting student with a passion for engineering. Jackson has shared his enthusiasm for 3D printing and prototyping on various occasions. Jackson is very knowledgeable and has helped his teacher troubleshoot various settings on the 3D printers in the classroom to help achieve optimal print quality. Jackson was a member of Skills USA last year and competed in an engineering design competition, placing third in the district contest, and next year, you plan to attend?"
NRCC.
"...to study engineering." Right? Congratulations.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to inform the board that the Christiansburg High School Senior of the Month for May is Zach Epperson. At this time, I would like to ask Zach and his family to come forward to be recognized. Here's what teachers and coaches have to say about Zach. "Zach is incredibly outgoing and personable and is a positive influence to the entire school. He participates in many school activities and always has a smile on his face. His school spirit and pride in being a Blue Demon is unmatched. He does a spectacular job of managing the Demon Athletics Twitter account, faithfully posting scores and updates to all CHS events. Additionally, he challenges himself to be his very best in his classes and on the playing field. Zach plans to attend Virginia Tech in the fall to major in multimedia journalism with a concentration in sports media." Congratulations, Zach.
Dr. Meyer, Ms. Caron, members of the board, it's an honor tonight to introduce Eastern Montgomery High Montgomery High School's May Senior of the Month, Olivia McGuire. She's accompanied tonight by her parents and her older sister. If they would come forward, please. EMHS teacher Janet Jennings had this to say about our Senior of the Month. "Olivia has been amazing this year. This is the first time I've taught her and am now teaching her in two classes. I knew the kid who had some attendance issues and grades were just okay. That's not the kid I'm teaching. She is here every day and her grades are wonderful. She actually said that this is one of her proudest accomplishments this year, turning her attendance and grades around. She is on task and on time. She is always aware of the topics being discussed and adds to every conversation in class. She is always willing to help out whoever needs help. She is kind to everyone in the room. Without Olivia, I'm not sure the Coffee Corner, our second-block coffee shop, would have ever gotten started. She has been involved in every step, every decision, and every moment it's been open. She even came to curriculum night to run the Mustang Corner and pushed for us to give the coffee a try that night, and it was a success due to Olivia." Congratulations, Olivia.
So at this time, I have the pleasure of doing the last presentation, which is our Teachers of the Year. And every school has a Teacher of the Year, and I think tonight is also Teacher Appreciation Week. So the perfect time to recognize our teachers, and I have to say, our teachers do a phenomenal job. And each teacher here represents not only themselves, but their whole school. So we do have some outstanding teachers. This program doesn't happen alone. We have Ben Jackson with us. If Ben would come up, he is from Horace Mann. And Ben will be presenting, or has already given the teachers, but he's going to present a crystal apple to each teacher. And do you want to show that, Ben? We put that under your chairs because they are a little bit fragile, but thought we would get out one to show you. And then Sharon Scott with the Chamber of Commerce. Sharon, if you would wave. Sharon hosted the reception that the Teachers of the Year just attended, and she has with her Mike Burnup from the New River Office Supplies. And he has a special little gift for the teachers as well. I'm not sure what's in that envelope, but... So we will start with Auburn Elementary. If Liz Sheer would come forward. Liz is a kindergarten teacher. Congratulations, Liz. Our next teacher is from Bellevue Elementary, Joni Newcombe, and Joni is Title I teacher. From Christiansburg Elementary, Amber Manon is a reading specialist. Christiansburg Primary, Karen Mikovich, kindergarten teacher. Eastern Montgomery Elementary, Teresa Pauli, kindergarten as well. Falling Branch Elementary, Kristen Crocker, first grade. Gilbert Linkus Elementary, Kelly Pleasant, fourth grade. Harding Avenue Elementary, Lindsay Hilling, fourth grade. Kips Elementary, Kelly McPherson, fifth grade. So far, Kips wins for the loudest audience. Margaret Beeks Elementary, Megan Hawley, second grade. Prices Fork Elementary, Caleb Schrader, physical education. Ms. Karan says he graduated with her son. Moving on to middle school, Auburn Middle, excuse me, Megan Knuckles, special ed teacher. Blacksburg Middle School, Erin Bond, eighth grade, physical science and earth science. Christiansburg Middle School, Laura Umansky, eighth grade, language arts. And she is not here? Charlesville Middle, Katie Shindel, sixth grade math. Auburn High School, Sarah McCall, special ed teacher, history and science co-teacher. Christiansburg High, Jessica Shannon, culinary arts. Eastern Montgomery High, Daily Howard, English. Montgomery Central, Jody Bailey, English. And last, but certainly not least, is Blacksburg High School, Catherine Lynde, who is the Teacher of the Year for Montgomery County Public Schools. Catherine shared during this process that it is her mission to engage students and ignite them so they can learn. We appreciate all she does for our students at Blacksburg High School where she teaches English. We appreciate all our Teachers of the Year. Thank you so much for the excellent job.
We could do two rows.
So now, teachers, as you all went back to your seats, just as you are supposed to do, we will take a 15-minute break so that we can congratulate everyone who was awarded recognition tonight.
Dr. Meyer will have some information that he would like to share.
Sure. Before the public address tonight, I met yesterday with a group of Blacksburg High School students, and it was a very, very productive conversation and really enjoyed talking to them and brainstorming some problems we've been having. And they came up with some wonderful thoughts and solutions, and I would like for them to come up and share with us what they had proposed to me and how we worked through it and how I signed off to agree upon this. So if you all would come up, I'd appreciate it. Introduce yourselves, too, when you get up here.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Giovanni Mills. This is Christian Shushak. This is Carson Hopkins, and we are three of the main organizers of yesterday's protest.
Yesterday, we had 200 students, parents, and community members protest the lack of beneficial communication from Dr. Mark Meyer and the MCPS Central Office.
We presented our demands and worked with Dr. Meyer and a couple of county administrators, as well as administrators from our own high school, for more than an hour and a half, and we felt that we had a very productive conversation that is going to lead to some things that are going to be mutually beneficial in the future. We deliberated for, I guess, about 90 minutes, and after making some minor adjustments, mostly cosmetic things such as citing specific policies, we came to an agreement that we both agreed on, and we are proud to announce that it was signed by multiple members of the MCPS community.
These members include County Administrator Lois Graham, BHS staff member Greg Lewis, BHS Administrator Todd Lewis, Superintendent Mark Meyer, and Student Representative Christian Shushak.
I have been asked to read the policy now, so I will be doing so. I'm going to be reading the entirety of the letter, so there will be a brief opening. "To the MCPS Central Office Administration, below is an attached list of demands created by the organizers of this protest. We are committed to speaking in open dialogue with you and prioritizing respect. However, until this list is signed by students, teachers, a BHS Administrator, and a Central Office Administrator, we will continue with civil disobedience. Stipulations are attached below. The recent removal of a staff member has created much confusion in the community regarding due-process proceedings. This staff member should be permitted to have due process before his status is decided at the Tuesday School Board meeting. Whether this representation is done by the staff member himself or by a representative that he so chooses is variable based only upon the staff member's preference. Secondly, we also ask that, if possible, the deliberations take place after community members are able to give their testimonies during the public address session of the School Board meeting." And we felt that this was really important for both us and for the large amount of the community that you can see is present in this room right now, to be able and speak on behalf of people that they're very passionate about and to try and give their input. And we think that that's the first step in establishing communication is listening, and thus far, we feel that that's been very successful. Secondly, we ask for the release of Policy 5-6, specifically Policy 5-6.1 and 5-1.5, to serve as a reference for community members. And for those in the audience that I am sure are not familiar with every page of the MCPS policy, essentially what those policies contain are, first, a list of the Professional Code of Ethics that teachers are mandated to follow, and, secondly, it is essentially a general guideline for what things teachers can be removed immediately from their positions for. And we've reached an agreement that these policies in the next few days will be on MCPS social media and will be made more accessible to the public, because while they are currently accessible today, I would assume that the majority of the community does not understand exactly how to get to them or even know that they exist. So we would like to establish this as being essentially one click away so that parents, students, or really anybody that is concerned can access those. Three, Blacksburg High School staff members should be granted the right to speak on their own behalf at this upcoming Tuesday School Board meeting. This right should be granted along with a guarantee that employees will face no retribution, both personally or professionally, from members of the MCPS Central Office. Staff members should adhere to the aforementioned Montgomery County Employee Code of Ethics, and this announcement will be communicated via email to staff members. And we have confirmed, particularly, and thank you to Dr. Meyer, that that email did go out to all staff members, and we are excited to announce that some of them are in the building with us tonight, and I'm really excited to hear their testimonies later. And we felt that was important because we observed a general amount of fear, or at least a communication of fear, from the Central Office to those staff members surrounding what they can and cannot say at the board meeting. And essentially, the Board of Ethics is not limiting, the Code of Ethics, I apologize, is not limiting really in any sort of way about what they can say, other than that they shouldn't involve certain information directly pertaining to topics like sensitive staff issues and minors, and that they obviously shouldn't use profanity, because that doesn't go over too well. Four, a council should be immediately created that has members of the MCPS Central Office as well as parents, administrators, staff members, and students from Montgomery County. The goal of this council should be to create an environment where teachers feel safe and appreciated and to address the apparent divide of trust that is formed between county administrators and staff. Blacksburg High School staff should be permitted to volunteer to serve on this council and to speak candidly without fear of retribution. The end goal of this committee should be to explore and improve communication and transparency. And we believe that, more than anything, what has prompted both our protest and a lot of the activism that I'm sure you've seen both vocally and on social media is a lack of communication. And I think this is partly because the Central Office and a lot of the higher-up administrators don't have as much of a direct line to other people in their county as we would like there to be. And we really hope that this council can be the first step in improving that line of communication and making sure that events like this don't take place in the future and to try and ensure that we kind of elucidate the current struggles of our county and just generally schools in our area. Lastly, we ask for a personal pledge on behalf of Dr. Meyer and the MCPS Central Office, which has been signed at this point, to strive for a more transparent relationship with staff and students. Along with this, we ask that a policy review committee be created to review current county policy of concern. This group should have parents, administrators, staff members, and students present to analyze existing policies and take into account community submissions for policy creation and change. And this was particularly important to us because, following the departure of one of our teachers, we had reached out to the School Board about maybe enacting a new policy pertaining to mental health, and certain members of the School Board did respond and were very productive with us, but we didn't feel that there was as widespread a response as we would have liked there to be. And we think that having a sitting council that involves students can contribute to ensuring that students constantly have their voices heard and that they don't feel kind of dismissed as we did in the past. And lastly, I would just like to enunciate and thank the members of the School Board and Dr. Meyer specifically for coming together and working for us with this. We know that this is not a cure-all, and to be quite frankly, we still see other issues that have not yet been addressed, but we feel that this is like the first piece in a puzzle that is going to be able to maybe help solve some of the problems that we are seeing today.
The policy was signed. This is true, but we noticed that some teachers still had reservations about speaking tonight, so we collected a couple anonymous testimonies from these teachers. One teacher stated, "I have little to no faith or respect for Central Office staff." Another teacher stated, "There is a perception that the working environment is not safe in terms of job status. We are not worried about the roof falling in, but we are worried about job security. How are we supposed to help our students if we do not feel comfortable here?"
Another teacher stated, "As a teacher, I am worried about the perception my students have of the trustability of the system they are expected to work under. Student attitudes have become sour. Attitude reflects leadership."
And for the most part, we believe that a lot of these feelings are relatively widespread in the staff. Obviously, some of them are more radical than others. Obviously, some of them are more radical than others. And we include these testimonies not as a bash on the members of the Central Office, but more so to elucidate that, while some of these things have been communicated to us, the enactment of this council and the immediate improvement of transparency is really going to go to try and help solve some of these issues that staff members currently have. And we really hope to work towards the future in making the current trust divide that is clearly very apparent better for those that follow us.
We are more than excited to hear what students, staff, and community members have to say during the public address tonight. And we cannot thank you all enough for your support of our teachers, principals, and classmates.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
I have a question. Come on, you have to answer questions.
Yes.
First of all, can I make some comments? Okay. First of all, I'm so proud of what you all have done and the manner in which you've presented yourselves, both yesterday and obviously this evening. You came to me with your thoughts, and they were well thought out, and they're all reasonable. We talked yesterday through each one and had to make some adjustments. And a lot of it is simply about educating, you know, what we do in our policies and that kind of thing. You know, in a couple of minutes, I'm going to ask Ms. Whitaker to come up to follow you to talk about, basically, HR procedures. And also, maybe talk about, you know, teachers and teachers' protection that we do have in place, that we need to educate our teachers on more so. And also educate you on our investigative processes and our due processes for our staff members. And so, you know, this is as a result of you asking. It's not something we would have done if you hadn't asked. And so, we appreciate that. You know, something, too, that we recognize, you know, obviously, there's been a lot of displeasure with different employees who have been removed for whatever reason. But probably, the number-one complaint that we received was transparency and communications. And I agree with that. And bringing it to my attention probably 500 times this weekend, that's okay. So that means we need to act on it. We need to do something about it. And so, what we're going to do is this: We're going to have a debriefing committee based on some of the things that have occurred at Blacksburg High School over the past month. And what I want, who I want on the committee is who you had talked about, Christian. I want students on the committee, parents, teachers, community members, administration, to sit down. And we're going to outline what happened in each situation. Of course, you know, of course, the most frustrating thing that folks hear in any of these situations is we can't tell you what actually happened with individuals. But that doesn't mean we can't address how we communicate with everyone. So we're going to commit to improving communication, but we have to have your feedback. You know, just sitting there the other day with the students, they had an idea that was easy, that had nothing to do with divulging any employee's private information. They looked at me and said, "You didn't send us an email." I'm like, "Yeah, you're right." You know, we sent staff an email, we sent the parents an email, but, you know, our high schoolers can handle that type of communication. And so, that's something that we'll add. And there's already, you know, ideas out there as to how we can better communicate. So we're going to commit to that. But what I want, I want folks who have opinions and thoughts and ideas on how we communicate or how we did not communicate to be in this discussion. And so, I think, Ms. Drake, you put on the back table back there. On the back table on the right side, you'll see a sheet. And if you want to be a part of that discussion, I would love to hear your thoughts. You know, we do get, we do get a lot of, "You didn't communicate well," or "You're not transparent." I didn't get, I wish I got as many ideas and many thoughts. Here's how we could have done something better. Some did actually send thoughts, "Or, 'I wish you'd have done it this way or that way.'" And so, I want to sit in a room with folks and actually have this conversation. Because communication is the most important thing that we do in this organization or any organization. So if you're willing to sign up and be a part of that conversation, and we'll probably meet in the next couple of weeks while it's fresh in everyone's mind, okay? The next thing that we're going to do, which is number five here, is, and I've been in a school division that did this, and it had what's called a policy committee. We have, I mean, dozens and dozens of policies that are changed every year. Most of them are generated from the state level due to Code of Virginia changing. Those we have very little choice in, okay? But we do have policies that we update and review and change every year. Usually, it's just been a central office with just central office input. We're going to do something that I'd done in another school division, and that is actually create a policy committee. And just like you had talked about, we're going to have students on the policy committee, teachers on the policy committees, building administrators on the policy committee, to actually review the policies prior to them getting to the School Board. And I think that can be helpful. And then, two, you know, as students or faculty members, you can be a resource for teachers in educating folks on our policies. You know, I know that, you know, unless it pertains to you, you're not sitting down at nighttime and reading through our policy manual. It's a lot there, okay? And so, but we need to find a better way to educate folks on our policies. Now, we're a large organization. We have over 10, close to 10,000 students, over 2,000 employees. We're the second-largest employer in Montgomery County. We do have policies and procedures, and we are a professional organization. We need to make sure that you all know that, and we communicate that appropriately. So we're going to work hard to do that, and I commit to doing that to all of you tonight, okay?
Pertaining to number four, since this was a request from the student, I'm going to put this back to you rather than normally I would put this to Dr. Meyer, which is, would you consider also having a School Board member on that council? And you don't have to answer that now, but if you'd like to discuss it among your group...
This is the communication that was the committee I was just talking about, the debriefing.
Yes, I think our wording on that was probably not as clear as it could have been. We did include...
We're talking about the same group, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'm fine if a School Board member wants to be a part of that.
Yeah, I think that would be very beneficial.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions? We're happy to take any of them.
Anybody else?
Okay.
I appreciate you guys doing things in a constructive way. And, you know, I think we're all here trying to, we're all here on the same team, trying to move in the same direction, I think, and trying to be productive. And I am happy to hear that you guys did have this sit-down. I think that, obviously, most, if not all, Board members are in agreement with Dr. Meyer on all of this. So thank you again.
And I just want to applaud you on the level of maturity and professionalism with which you have conducted yourselves and handled this. You've acted well beyond your years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before Ms. Whitaker starts, I have, I just want to mention that, so you will have it on your agenda, that on May 21 meeting, which would be, you know, two weeks from now, the mental health policy is going to be on the agenda. So if you'd like to attend that meeting to follow up, that's for the discussion, what we have or how we should change it.
So, yes, so not specifically looking at the policy that you guys presented, but having, you know, maybe some comments on it.
And what we have already in place.
But, yeah, we want to let everyone know what we already have in place in terms of mental health for our students and our employees. And so, I think that's an educational piece, too, because we do have a lot in place for them, but we need to let you know what that actually is. All right, our Human Resources Director, Ms. Whitaker.
Great. Thank you so much. I apologize for reading, but there's a lot of information here, so I apologize for that. I'm going to share with you today a little bit about the investigation process and then our policies that are in place for grievability. So when an investigation is conducted, the first step, of course, is receiving the complaint or concern. We are required to look into any complaint or concern that is presented to someone who is an authority within the school division. So we have to look at it, and we have to examine and evaluate that concern. First thing we do is look at the concern and decide, do we need to involve outside entities? So that means, do we need to contact the police department? Do we need to reach out to Child Protective Services, to the Department of Education, or any other entities that may be involved? At that point, the investigation, is this one? At that point, the investigation is conducted. If it's with one of those groups, then we do that investigation together and coordinate that and work together on those pieces. When we're investigating, we're going to look at a bunch of different materials and a lot of different things that we have to evaluate. And so, we've got to determine if there's a policy violation in place. And so, what we need to look at when we're doing that is, first, interviewing anybody who's been referenced or said that they were involved in that. So the person who's making the complaint tells me who they're complaining against, and I interview both the complainant and then the alleged person who did something. Any person, either one of them, represents that they would like me to speak with, and that I speak with those individuals and conduct interviews with them. We then look at any other evidence or documents that we would need to review. That could be anything. It could be emails, videos, it could be written documentation, it could be a bus video, any other piece of evidence, policies, laws, any regulations that are in place for the school division. And so, we review all of those pieces. Then we decide if there's a violation of policy. And so, that's determined by the Human Resources Director. And there's a variety of things that go into making that determination. You're going to look at the surrounding circumstances, the nature of the behavior, any past incidences or past or continuing behaviors that have been addressed, the relationship between the party, how often the conduct occurred, the identity of the perpetrator in relationship to, or the alleged perpetrator in relationship to the victim. So is there a power situation here? You know, is someone somebody else's supervisor, or are they in a position of authority? We look at the location of the alleged incident, and then the context in which that incident occurred. There's then a presentation of findings that is given to the Division Superintendent and a recommendation. And each of these things are included in that presentation of finding. So there's an overview of the allegation, the individuals interviewed, every person that was spoken to, all of the evidence that was reviewed is discussed, the review of all state law that may be in place, or federal law, the review of all School Board policies that have been reviewed or looked at in terms of the investigation or relate to it, the employee's response to the allegation and what they said in response to whether or not they did this. And then, the findings are presented. And so, the HR director makes a recommendation. They say either, "Yes, this is founded, and here are my recommendations," or they say, "No, this is an unfounded complaint." At that time, the superintendent makes a decision. And so, the superintendent can either go with the recommendation of the Human Resources Director, the superintendent can say, "Nope, I'm not, I don't agree at all, and this is an unfounded case." Or the superintendent can say, "I agree it is founded, but I want a different disciplinary action put into place." And so, the superintendent makes that decision. Then, at that time, a notification of findings is given to the employee. And then, if grievance rights are available, the employee's grievance rights are presented to them. There are four different policies that speak to employee grievance rights, and then also policies that speak to grievance rights as associated to reassignment. So reassignments are protected by Policy 5-2.8, and grievance rights are protected by 5-6.1. We actually have no ability to change those policies. Those are state law. And so, our grievance processes for licensed personnel are set forward for us by the State of Virginia, and every school division has to follow the same procedures and policies. There are four different ones, because we have the support staff, and then we have our licensed professional. And then, under each of those, there are two different policies, one related to issues involving dismissal and issues that are related to anything other than dismissal. And so, each of those are handled differently. There's a lot there, so I picked one to go over with you, to kind of show you what those steps are that are described, prescribed by the State of Virginia. And so, it's 8VAC 20-9030 is this grievance procedure in the Virginia State Code. And so, the first step is, once that determination is given to the employee, they have 15 days, this is in a situation of, they're given 15 days to appeal. So they can sit for 15 days, they're notified how many days they have, and they can then request an appeal. When they do that, it first goes to their immediate supervisor. If that supervisor is not able to handle that, then that appeal is going to go to the principal. If the principal is not able to come to a resolution that the employee agrees with, so they sit down and try to mediate the situation, and if they can't come to an agreement together, then the individual has five days to appeal to the superintendent. The superintendent meets, oh, I just said that term, sorry, the superintendent meets, and they try to come together to a decision as well. If the employee still does not agree with the superintendent's decision, then they have an additional five days to appeal to the School Board. So they can appeal that to the School Board, and the Board has three options. They can decide to hear it, they can decide to use a grievance officer, and those grievance officers have been pre-selected and approved by the School Board way in advance, so those individuals are already approved at this time. We already know who those hearing officers are. Or they can choose to take written evidence from the accuser and also from Dr. Meyer as to what their stance is. I'm sorry, not the accuser, the employee, as to what their stance is in that situation. So they decide to hear it. This is a private hearing. It's not a public hearing. It's closed, and they get to present evidence, and they get to bring witnesses to the table. If the Board hears this, the superintendent is excluded from the closed session. So that means, when they go into executive session to make their determination, the superintendent does not get to be a part of that determination. Superintendent can help to write the statement that comes from the Board, but cannot be involved in any decision-making of that appeal. If it's a hearing officer, the hearing officer makes a determination and presents it to the School Board. The School Board has 30 days to decide whether or not they want to do what the hearing officer made as a recommendation for them. And so, that's one of our processes. Each of the four have steps like that, that very specifically detail and spell out the number of days, exactly what's done between those days. We have the forms that are available to be filled out. And so, all of those are found in our policies online. And again, the grievance procedures are determined for our teachers and licensed personnel by the state, and our support staff grievance procedures very closely match those. Do you have any questions regarding that?
I do have one question.
Sure.
Could you explain where, in any of this part of the process, that our School Board attorney might be involved?
Oh, he could be involved at any point. There's constant communication, there's a constant reference to law, sharing of evidence or facts of what is your, you know, they are our legal experts. So anything that they may recommend or share, you know, they have a much higher level of knowledge. And so, we can discuss with the attorney at any point and do.
And usually, when a recommendation is made to me, and if it may be a legal matter, I do contact our School Board attorney almost all of the time. And if he, and if our School Board attorney gives me a very direct recommendation, not just advice and says, "You should," based on what you have and based on law, I follow that. Because I think I have an obligation to you to follow our School Board attorney's direction.
I did want to share with you, the other policy that we have that's in relation to grievance rights is connected to reassignments of employees. And so, that, again, is prescribed by the State of Virginia and tells us the steps. But it's not under the grievance piece, because it's actually under the contracting piece of what you are able to do. But there are also grievance rights associated with that, so I wanted to share this with you. So if an employee is reassigned, which means someone is put into a different position that might be at a lower pay rate, that needs to be notified to that licensed employee by June 15. They must be given the reason in writing and be given an opportunity to a hearing. That hearing can be either in front of, or to a meeting. That can be either with the superintendent's designee, who is typically the Human Resources Director, with the superintendent, or with the School Board. The employee gets to select who they would like to hear their grievance. And once they select who they would like to hear it, then that group or person will share with them the process and timelines and procedures for that grievance procedure.
So what you're saying is, the first one you describe is for an employee who is being recommended to be dismissed. This one is for...
So, if an employee is reassigned, which means someone is put into a different position that might be at a lower pay rate, that needs to be notified to that licensed employee by June 15th. They must be given the reading, the reason in writing and be given an opportunity to a hearing. That hearing can be either in front of, or to a meeting, that can be either with the superintendent's designee, who is typically the Human Resources Director, with the superintendent, or with the school board. The employee gets to select who they would like to hear their grievance. And once they select who they would like to hear it, then that, that group or person will share with them the process and timelines and procedures for that grievance procedure.
So, what you're saying is, the first one you describe is for an employee who is being recommended to be dismissed. This one is for an employee who we're recommending to be reassigned, correct?
Yep.
So, there are differences.
Yeah. And it could also be a dismissal, or it could be issues other than dismissal, that first one that I laid out, there's just a couple pieces or days that vary between the two, but they're very, very similar in the process. And they're available, again, online, you can go to that Policy 5, I think it's 5-6.1, and find those laid out.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Anything you want to mention about, you know, because I've heard some things about employees not feeling comfortable speaking to the school board. And could you maybe make mention about teachers, and especially teachers who have tenure?
Sure. Of course, we have.
How they are protected?
Sure. You know, we have provisions, again, that are mandated by the State of Virginia that state the reasons for, the reasons that a school division is allowed to give any discipline. And that is all laid out very clearly in our policies. It states what we can do and what we can't do, what actions we can take, what actions we cannot take. And also, we have the contract status that Dr. Meyer was speaking about. So, a teacher, at this point, is on a provisional license for three years, that's mandated by the State of Virginia, and then they go on continuing contract status. Continuing contract essentially means you have your job unless you have done something that the school board determines they no longer want to employ you for. And so, you really would have to do something within those lines to be disciplined. We have, you know, within breaking the rules that are spelled out of the things that we can discipline for. All of our policies and personnel very clearly state the things that we can do. There's really no way to come up with a comprehensive list of every action that someone could or could not do, because there is no way for us to imagine every situation or circumstance or, you know, invention, let's say vaping, we never knew that was going to be made. So, there's no way to lay out a policy or rule that spells every single action, but it does clearly define for us the expectations of employees. Personnel Statement of Ethics is a place that really lays out for you the expectations of all school division employees. In terms of speaking, the only policy that comes right to my mind about speaking is the employees are prohibited from pushing their political agenda on their students, and so that they could not, you know, try to coerce a child into some political view. Of course, a social studies teacher can teach about those, but you can't try to push or coerce a student into listening to your political views. That needs to stay outside of the educational realm.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just more specifically, could you explain the difference between employment at will and tenure?
Well, you know, tenure provides for that position to be provided for every year. So, teachers who are on their probationary status, those first three years, they get a contract each year, and that is, you have a job for this year. Once you become a continuing contract teacher, you really don't get a contract anymore, because that first one you get for continuing contract, you get that one, and that says you will have that. And so, at that point, after that, you really just get a salary notification that's saying, here's what we're going to pay you, but we already agreed to keep you employed. You know, in Virginia, you, it's a right-to-work state, and I assume, you know, other employers can terminate employees at any time, because it is a right-to-work state, and an employee can quit at any time. In the school division, we cannot do that. We have to follow the laws and procedures that are prescribed for us by the State of Virginia. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't, I don't know, maybe this is something that gets hashed out in the committee or council that gets put together in the future, and I don't mean to speak out of turn or to bring up something that we don't really need to hash out right now, but, you know, you did ask that question, and some of the things that I've been hearing this week, you know, when you talk about fear among some staff members, and when you talk about issues of trust, you know, that explanation, while very technically accurate, thank you very much, Ms. Whitaker, but, you know, may not be enough to, to put some of our, maybe some of our staff who are feeling fearful at ease, you know, and maybe that's on us too, and maybe this is something we talk about later, but I mean, I think I'm certainly committed to allowing our staff to speak their minds, certainly tonight, any other night, and I think the rest of you probably are too, and that's certainly something that we should explore as we move forward to make sure that we gain back that trust and let our teachers and our staff be able to give us their opinions, because it matters a lot to me and I think to the rest of us.
And you know, there's a lot of things we just can't share. So, the number of investigations that are conducted without findings, or the number of things that are turned in and the situations that are reported, we can't ever share those because they're private and confidential. You know, we have 870 teachers approximately, and then all of our administrators and other licensed personnel. You hear about these things very seldom, but I am constantly, every day almost, doing an investigation into something. It is a huge component of my job, and, you know, and we want to follow the right processes and procedures each time, because, you know, they're prescribed for us by law, and it's also the employee's rights.
You know, and there are certain laws that we are bound by, you know, HIPAA laws.
Privacy laws.
Privacy laws, the FERC laws dealing with students, you know, we had a situation at Blacksburg a few weeks ago, and a lot of folks want to know about a student and what was happening with that student. And we can't, we can't talk about that and what's going on with that specific student. We, you know, one thing that I want to talk about when we come together is, what can we do to make people and students and parents feel that kids are safe? And how can we communicate that without divulging the status of the student? I think there's some ways we can maybe do that, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker.
I don't want to be rude.
That's okay.
But I just wanted to touch on something that Dr. Meyer and I discussed privately earlier, because I think this is, a lot of people have a copy of this, I think it's something that they want to understand. But line number, or line one basically says that the staff member that we aforementioned should be permitted due process before his status is decided. And could you just briefly touch on how representation plays a role in the due process proceedings? Because we talked about how, whether this representation is done by the staff member himself or by a representative, and I think that a lot of people would like to have the answer to that question. Once again, I'm very sorry.
Ms. Terrell.
Oh, no, you're fine, you're fine. And I don't want to quote without having it right in front of me, but again, these are prescribed by the law. So, the law dictates whether an individual represents themselves, or whether or not they are represented, or whether or not they can have an attorney present at that process. And so, those things are in place. I don't know that, we saw that that's set of someone's choosing, because we have to follow that law. So, this is the revised version, I don't know about that piece, because I have to follow.
Okay.
We have to follow what the law says. So, if the law provides for them to either represent themselves or to be represented by their attorney, then they certainly get to do that. If it's a place where they represent themselves, then that's what we have to follow in court swift.
Understood. Thank you.
Is that okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public address time. At this time, and each of our regularly scheduled meetings, we set aside 30 minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining public education in Montgomery County. And each speaker is allowed of three minutes to speak, and a screen throughout the room and in front of the speaker will let, when 30 seconds remaining and when three minutes pass. As a reminder, the board does not respond to speakers during the public address, and accepted etiquette is not to applaud or make loud noises during the public address session, so that the only reason is that we will maximize the number of speakers that can speak. And at this time, I have nine individuals to sign up. And the first person is Sharon Duncan. Please come forward and state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Meyer. My name is Sharon Duncan, and I live at 495 Mill Point Road in Blacksburg. And I have a son that receives special education services through the On-Campus Transition Program at Virginia Tech, and I also have a son that will be graduating from Blacksburg High School this month. My children have had the privilege of having Mr. Kits as their high school principal, along with the privilege of having him as their elementary school principal, too. I had the privilege, as my older son required many special discussions with Mr. Kits during the school year, of having him as their principal. I always felt welcome to discuss any concerns with Mr. Kits, whether he agreed with me or not. He always was straightforward, and I always left our meeting knowing that he had the best interest of my child and other children in his decision. I also was privileged to be a parent volunteer in the office at Blacksburg High School for five years. I will always remember the first few times I volunteered, how impressed I was that any child, no matter the reason or the child's background, could freely walk into that office and see an administrator immediately. This was not my educational experience, and I was thrilled to see that students came first. It is not my business why Mr. Kits is not allowed to remain as principal at Blacksburg High School during the last month of school, but it is my business to voice that I couldn't have wanted a better principal to partner with me in leading my child's education and to serve a role model for my children's teachers and staff. I couldn't have handpicked a better person. Perhaps I could have settled for Chris Stewart, Auburn High School Principal, or Amanda Widener, Blacksburg Middle School Principal, or Micah Mefford, Margaret Beeks Elementary School Principal, or Marcia Settle, Auburn Elementary School Principal, or Oliver Lewis, Christiansburg Primary School Principal, or Megan Marshall, Auburn Middle School Principal, or Todd Lewis, soon to be East Montgomery High School Principal. And the reason that I could have settled for any one of those current Montgomery County principals is that they work directly under the leadership and were mentored by Mr. Kits. Considering Mr. Kits' leadership record in our school system, his integrity, and the respect he has from our children, our teachers, parents, and the community at large, I simply ask you to look closely at the situation which resulted in removing him from Blacksburg High School. I also ask you to look more closely what this decision has done to our children.
Ms. Duncan, your time is up.
The fear it has put in our employees and our school system, and the lack of trust that is placed with parents. As you are deliberating this evening, please consider all of this, and I hope to see Mr. Kits reinstated as principal of Blacksburg High School. Thank you.
Next person is Jerry Elliott. Next person is Jerry Elliott. You can come forward and state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Members of the Board and Dr. Meyer. My name is Jerry Elliott, and I reside at 3426 Mount Zion Road in Blacksburg. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I would likely like to publicly question the leadership of Montgomery County Public Schools. One of you has been quoted to say that you've known Brian Kits for over 20 years, and if you did not feel the accusations were warranted, that you would resign. If it was so serious, my question to you is this: if it's something so serious that requires pulling him out of school just three weeks left in the school year, then why is he still employed and allowed to speak at graduation? It has been publicly stated by Montgomery County Public Schools, he can keep his job if he wants to speak at graduation. Then again, I ask you, why would Montgomery County Public Schools just waited three weeks to make the change? Pulling Brian Wednesday has caused a major disruption for our school, just three days before AP exams, a week before SOFs, and now essentially staining every senior's year by doing so right before graduation. Furthermore, if leadership did not anticipate the backlash and the disruptions of this action that they've caused, then they did not adequately have their hand on the pulse of Blacksburg High School. Anyone who has simple knowledge of Blacksburg High School would have known what would have happened after an action such as this. We may never know what really happened due to privacy issues, but what we can do is examine what our leadership operates, this school system. We deserve much better. Thank you, guys.
If you, if you hold your applause, then we can have more speakers be able to address, please. The next one is Brian Gillespie, and after that is Jenna Gillespie.
Hello, my name is Brian Gillespie, 701 Hidden Valley Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. I wrote something, a lot of it, I guess I have to leave out, but I'll shoot you guys an email later. I think nationwide, the public school system is struggling. I feel like the last three years, Montgomery County's trying to compete to be on that front-runner list. I've had two kids go through this system, one still in, and my two older kids, I have never faced the drama, the issues, all the problems that are facing us now. There is constant change. My kid comes home from school, there's a lack of respect for the administration, for everybody. It's like a joke. It's a joke. He's a straight A student, he'll get through here, he wants to go to UVA, but he doesn't need anybody. He just laughs. I wonder who's making all the changes with our educators? Is it the superintendent? Is it the board? We'd like to know. You don't have to tell us why Mr. Kits left. I own two very successful businesses. I understand HIPAA laws, I understand all of it. You can't share that. But tell us who's making those decisions, so we can address them. Because I'm going to tell you, since this regime has taken over, it's a lack of respect for teachers. I like the game we're playing up here about no fear and asking these questions and all this. It's a game, and I see the game. And I don't care about retaliation, because there's nothing you can do to me. But I will say this, the tweets, the deleted tweets, all that stuff, it needs to stop. You know, I don't tweet, I don't Instagram, I don't Snapchat, I don't care about any of it. I coach, I work, my wife's a preschool aide, you know, I don't need all that stuff. What I need is for our kids to be educated, instead of yesterday sitting on the line, filling them full of feel-good, feel-free, all that stuff. That needs to end. If it's the board, my problem with that is, I think if you're going to be on the board, you should have a degree in education, and you should be a current or former educator. You're making decisions on people's life that you don't run. I don't weld, so I don't tell a welder how to weld. The other thing is, I understand you can't say anything, but the rumors are, it's all over depression, mental health issues. If that's the case, teen suicide is at an all-time high. And if you let a teacher or a principal walk out because of depression, there's nobody I'd rather my child talk to if they're considering that, is somebody who has faced that, battled it, and overcome it. Do you understand that? And in closing, all this changing, you teach first grade this year, second grade this year, third grade this year, you do this next year, you go to this school. You want to make a change, start right there.
Next speaker is Jenna Gillespie. Please state your name and address.
I'm Jenna Gillespie, 701 Hidden Valley Road. This has been an interesting year at Blacksburg High School. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I wanted to talk about most of the issues going on. I am an MCPS employee, as of today. Don't know, I don't believe the hype, I'm sorry. I've had enough. I was a parent, a volunteer, a sub, and now a preschool aide, and I've watched it go downhill. It saddens me, it sickens me. I don't want to watch our children be in such a volatile environment. They know, they hear the rumors, they come home, tell the rumors to the parents, the parents get on all the social media, the tweeting's out of control, nobody should be on their phones tweeting all day long. We're all adults here. I know it's a younger generation, and tweeting's a big thing, but my God, to require people to tweet. to tweet constantly is ridiculous, and quite frankly, I'm so over, just tweet out when we're out of school, that's all you gotta do. There's no need for all this other tweeting. Anyway, I wrote a whole thing, I can't even, I'm so disgusted, I can't even handle it. All right, I'm going to stop with the MCPS employee part of me, because it's pretty much over. But I've watched, like I said, every side of the fence here, I've been part of the school system, in other school systems, and in this one. And I don't know who's running the show. I don't know if it's you, I don't know if it's all of you, HR, I don't know who's making the calls, but you gotta stop. You gotta get together, figure out how to run it effectively. Communication, that's all we want. You're putting fear in the teachers. They should respect you. Instead, they're walking around scared to death because you might fire them for something that they say. They're not going to say anything crazy, they just want to know the truth. They want to know that they have a job tomorrow if they do their job. And every teacher that I've met in Montgomery County, they're stellar. They deserve the respect, they deserve the communication, they deserve the transparency. We love the school system in this area. I moved here from Hampton Roads, love the school system in this area, hate what's going on up here or behind the scenes at Central Office. It's ridiculous. It needs to change, there needs to be transparency, there needs to be communication, and I know you're saying you're going to move towards that, but you're a great mouthpiece, and I want to see action. I'm done, I think it's ridiculous. And I'm not fighting for my child, my child only has a few more years left, I'm fighting for all these children that have come through the preschool, and they deserve a voice. They're coming up in the future, they are our future, and I want to fight for them.
Thank you. Next individual is Susan Anton, and after that, Greg Lewis.
My name is Susan Anton, I live at 3570 Isabel Court in Blacksburg. I'm the mother of a senior at Blacksburg High School. I have 27 years of teaching experience in public education. During my career, I've worked with many administrators, and very few have impressed me as much as Brian Kitts. You know that everyone in the community was shocked by his removal, but what I don't think you really realize is the wave of disruption that's rolled across the county. Starting in my home, my son had an AP exam yesterday morning. Once the news came out, it was really, really hard for him to focus and do those last few days of studying that he needed to do, because he had so many questions that no one could answer. Many students are upset because they saw Mr. Kitts as a friend and an advocate. Teachers at the school have struggled to get through their classes, some with tears rolling down their faces. The last month of school for our senior should be one of happy anticipation, but the mood has completely changed. Morale among employees across the county has been addressed already. I've had conversations with several spouses of teachers who say, my husband, my wife, they're really watching what's happening, because they know if someone who's as respected as Brian Kitts was can be targeted like this, they can be taken out, too. And they're afraid to speak out, because they're afraid for their jobs. This is not right. One question that's been in the forefront of my mind is, why was this handled in this way, in such a public, humiliating, and disruptive manner? Mr. Kitts' time as principal was already coming to an end. Why was it necessary to take an action at this time, assuring maximum upheaval right before the onset of high-stakes testing? I do believe in holding employees to high standards, but I also believe in treating good employees with compassion. Brian Kitts has always stood up and advocated for the students and teachers in his community, and tonight, I stand up for him, and I say to you that what we've witnessed over the past several days is an example of, it's not an example of effective communication, it's not an example of compassion, and it's not an example of good leadership.
Greg Lewis, 804 Petra Pass. For the record, I'm here as an advocate for the legacy and reputation of Brian Kitts. First, Mr. Kitts' reputation. I've never had the same regard for an administrator that I've had for Mr. Kitts. I've never trusted an administrator as I've trusted and continue tonight to trust Mr. Kitts. Has Mr. Kitts committed an offense so egregious that he had to be immediately removed? This is what we're asked to believe, though I have yet to speak to a teacher at BHS who believes him capable of such an act. If it were to turn out to be true, though it strains credulity, then we would accept the fact, but the facts are still hidden within the legal verbiage. I must have the facts, and until the facts are presented in clear, plain language, I will continue to trust that he has conducted himself honestly and honorably in the side of both God and men, because neither I nor anyone that I work with has seen any other side to Mr. Kitts. For those of us who know him best, his reputation stands intact. Until the hard facts show otherwise are made known, that is my resolve. Second, his legacy. Under his leadership at BHS, we've won 26 team state championships in VHSL sports, at least 70 individual state champions, 26 appearances at national championships, at least 10 students chosen for All-American honors, championships in boys and girls cross-country, boys and girls soccer, boys tennis, football, golf, indoor and outdoor track, swimming and diving, 10 Wells Fargo Cups for sports, academics, sportsmanship, making us the winningest school in Virginia, and the only school to win all three cups in a single year. 5,000 advanced placement exams, the most frequent score being the top score of five. Accumulated scholarships of $25 million, hundreds of students certified with career and technical certifications. Mr. Kitts' added classes in painting, ceramics, musical theater, ensemble, percussion, cybersecurity, robotics, manufacturing systems, health careers, cabinet-making, the Junior Corps of Cadets, dual enrollment, advanced placement. That is his legacy. That's what your children will lose in the dismissal of Brian Kitts. I can only hope that whatever his transgressions might be, they'll be worth the cost of losing the man who's the greatest advocate for your sons and daughters that you will never find again. He will not be replaced. Thank you.
I hope I'm pronouncing it right. And the person after is Robin Hilton.
Good evening, I'm Laura Zanotti. I live at 1941 High Ridge Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board this evening. I am the parent, sorry, I think I lost the microphone. I'm the parent of one of the students who have been among the organizers of the protest, Giovanni Mills, and I have to say in front of everybody that I'm very proud of him and of all the other kids who decided to stand up and ask for more information about the process that has been incredibly disruptive at the end of the school year. I'm an educator, I'm a professor at Virginia Tech, so I really care about students. I have a few questions for the board. How do you think students who have mental illness feel about seeing a teacher who has spoken openly about mental illness being removed from the classroom without having any chance of giving any explanation, or nobody else giving a meaningful explanation of why this has happened? How do you think students feel, where inspirational figures like a principal that everybody seemed to like and appreciate is removed with three weeks before the end of the school year, without any communication about why exactly this has happened? As others have indicated, this has created a lot of disruption in our community and a lot of questions in our students. They saw Mr. Kitts and Mr. Kraft as leaders, as role models, and those people have been removed in a way that implicitly has tarnished their reputation, and so our students are left with questions. And I wonder what kind of example this gives them for their future, in terms of trusting institutions and trusting the fairness of processes. I think rumors and secrecy are not a good way of dealing with issues, and one wonders why there is this fear and intimidation that is felt, rightly or wrongly, from the people who are directly involved and from other teachers in the school. I really hope this can be addressed very seriously in the near future. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Robin Hilton.
My name is Robin Hilton, I reside at 1320 Mahone Street, Christiansburg. I'm here tonight to speak on something completely different, but we felt that this was the time that we needed to do so. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the nurses. We would like to publicly thank you for hearing our voice and voting to approve us for VRS. It seems almost poetic that we're receiving this wonderful news today, because you may not know, but tomorrow is National School Nurse Day. We are so very grateful for your support. I would like to share with you from the author, Peter Reynolds. It's a child's book, but one of my favorites. Sometime you'll say something, and no one will be listening, but keep saying what's in your heart, and you will find someone who will listen. Thank you for listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you. The last person tonight signed up to speak is Nick Coes.
Hello, my name's Nick Coes, I live at 1603 Lark Lane in Blacksburg. In a few short weeks, my son's going to be graduating from Blacksburg High School. In the fall, he's going to be attending Emory University in Atlanta, which is one of the best colleges in the country. Yesterday, we found out that he won a national merit scholarship, which is incredible. Sebastian's success is due in no small part to the respect, stability, and high-quality learning environment that Mr. Kitts helped instill at BHS. My daughter Ellie is currently in the eighth grade. In the fall, she's going to enter BHS. She's got a rare quirk in her learning abilities, so in traditional settings, her academic achievement doesn't match, is in commensurate with her high IQ. But in the fall, she was set to be one of the inaugural participants in the Bruin Academy, which is a program that Mr. Kitts helped institute for kids that are not necessarily at the top or the bottom of the pack academically, but somewhere in the middle. These kids are often frankly overlooked. They're neither poor enough academically to warrant extra teaching and instructional attention, nor are they highly achieving enough to take full advantage of the many great, high-level AP and honors courses BHS author has. The Bruin Academy exists in no small part because of Mr. Kitts' willingness to devote the resources, intensive resources, and teaching staff to setting it up. He was willing to help all children succeed, which makes him so special. Now, though, I'm concerned, and I'm concerned because the school board apparently no longer prioritizes academic excellence. When you dismissed Mr. Kraft, you, as a school board and as the superintendent, lost my respect. My son tells me Mr. Kraft was one of the best teachers he ever had at BHS. Scores of kids felt, other kids felt the same way. Mr. Kraft is my son's teacher in AP American History. He got a five on that AP test, and this is not a parental boast, because from what I understand, most of the other kids in that class also got fives, which is the perfect test score in AP. Such uniform excellence doesn't happen by accident. Mr. Kraft was responsible for our children doing so well, and yet despite the academic excellence he was fostered, he was dismissed for non-academic reasons. My guess is that Mr. Kitts was also removed as BHS principal for reasons that had nothing to do with his in-school performance. Today's run of time suggests that the school board dismissed both Mr. Kitts and Mr. Kraft on the advice of MCPS's attorneys. Tonight, Superintendent Meyer, you admit as much, when your attorneys talk, you listen, which to me implies that you're more concerned with CYA liability issues than you are with maintaining academic excellence, that you're more concerned with covering your you-know-what than what our children need, which is the wrong way to look at things. I urge you and your attorneys to come forth and publicly reveal the thought processes and the criteria, in fact, the whole framework you use when deciding whether or not to dismiss employees. My fear is that your attorneys are way too quick to dismiss employees that have dedicated their lives to helping our children succeed.
Your time is up, Mr. Coes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your participation in public addresses. Now closed, next item will be our consent items, consent agenda. Board members, do you have any questions regarding the consent items?
I'm thankful for the Rotary Club for their generous comments.
Thank you. If you don't have any other questions, we will approve consent agenda as it is, and next item will be our payment of bills.
How about we pay the bills?
Second.
Any discussions or questions regarding the bills? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our bill pays our bill. Next item will be, let's see, I think I lost one of my pages. Next item is our business meeting participation, and we have to, because Ms. Graham has asked to participate in tonight's meeting electronically, since she cannot come out, may I have a motion to approve her participation electronically?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have to wait for her electronic participation, or you're good? Shall I continue?
We're good. Harvey, I'll pipe her in.
Okay.
And she's going to put her phone on mute.
Okay.
And then she will unmute when she would like to speak. You'll hear her over the speakers.
Okay.
Actually, you'll hear her louder than you're hearing me right now.
Okay. That's great. I just want to make sure we're good to go. Sounds good. The next item is our board member reports. Board members, for the sake of time, we're going to ask each other to speak and try to share in three minutes, possibly, and hopefully we'll try to make it happen. And I think since Ms. Graham, well, Ms. Graham can share, too, obviously, but Ms. Franklin is not here, but if we can keep it around three minutes, that will be great. And I don't know who wants to jump in?
Well, since I got to speak last time, you didn't, I'm going to defer to you guys, so I'll give you each maybe an extra minute.
Okay. Thank you. Miss Parde?
Yes, sure, Ms. Karan, thank you. I'll go ahead and start. Try to keep it under three minutes. A lot going on these past couple months. I know we deferred last time, which means there's more things going on that I needed to add to my list. I did want to say that Mrs. Graham and I did attend the FFA Farmers Breakfast at Auburn High School on March 14th. It was a great time, meeting with the FFA and the farmers. They talked a lot about the agriculture in that area and how we're trying to get our kids interested into that particular club and that spectrum of that knowledge for those classes, to help maybe stay in the county and help work some of those jobs and keep them here after graduation. So it was great visiting with them, and it was a great breakfast. I also attended the eighth-grade Christiansburg Middle School dance, I also chaperoned. That went well. I'd like to thank Jason Garrettson and his staff for putting on such a wonderful... I'd like to thank Jason Garrettson and his staff for putting on such a wonderful dance for the eighth grade kids. They love it. They got to dress up. It was like a mini prom. It was kind of scary. My daughter went, but it was great. It was enchanted garden. They had great food that was provided by, I believe, the, did that, I believe it was Blacksburg Custom Catering.
Yeah.
That's who did that. They did great. So that was a lot of fun. I did a lot of field trips. I went to the, let's see, I went to the science field trip for the Physical Science High School Credit Course there. We went to Natural Bridge and the Planetarium at Radford University. That was a great trip for those kids as well. Also did Washington DC in one day. Very tiring, but got to see a lot. That was a wonderful field trip as well with the eighth grade Christiansburg Middle School class. Went to my first NSBA National School Board Conference in Philadelphia with a few of my school board members. It was wonderful. It was a great opportunity for me to learn and grow as a new school board member. Went to several great sessions. I'm just going to very quickly go down a couple of the sessions that I attended. One of the first ones I went to was the Next Level Engagement Ideas for Learning Spaces That Excite, which I was very interested in concerning that we are renovating and building new schools. I thought that would be a great opportunity to, to learn about that more. A couple of the main takeaways from that session were that students were learning more in career-focused driving environments, so that's something I feel like we're doing a great job of here, and that a not a, not a one-size-fits-all school, what one school's doing might not be exactly the best thing for another school, given the difference in the, in the counties. I think that's another great idea. We need to do what fits in each county to, to suit our kids best. Also, the collaborative spaces inside and outside of the school area and the engagements in the renovations and the maker spaces that were presented were, were quite informing as well. Another session I attended was how to respond to cyberbullying, on threat, online threats and social media challenges, which we all know is a huge, a huge problem that we face today in the schools and with our students. So that was very informative as well. I also attended a session of a new board member boot camp, which was discussed with the possibly, the possibility of the policies and the pitfalls of the sessions. We went over best practices for policy development and implementation and tricks for policy communication and development. I also went to impacts of mental awareness in the classroom, which I know has been a huge thing that we've had going on for a while in our schools, focused on risky behavior, effects of mental illness and medication in school, as well as participation and functioning and school review of protocol measures that a school can take. I attended another session, Community Engagement Building Relationships to Advance Student Achievement. They offered very informative, effective communication and engagement on how communities can successfully discuss different types of community engagement, which falls in perfectly with everything that has gone on this evening and what has happened here in the last couple weeks, and how we can plan to develop an engagement plan and address healthy and sometimes social media can hopefully become a positive element in our plan. So thank you, and I'm sorry if I went over three minutes.
Thank you. I think you did well.
That was a mouthful. I was trying to get it all in. Wow, mine's not going to be that good. Okay, well, I went to Philadelphia too, and this is going to be short, sweet. One of the keynote speakers that I just have to speak about is him was Johnny Taylor, and he was a human relations person, I believe, and I truly enjoyed what he said because he basically was talking about the disconnect in America, not just between, you know, parents and different thing. It's got to do with students as well. And he was sharing about how we need to put back public speaking into our curriculum and writing because the students that they're seeing, he was over a million employees that were coming out into the workforce, just did not have those skills. And even though we've got lots and lots and lots of other great things happening, those are some of the areas, and I hear every day from business owners that that's the biggest thing, that sometimes students just can't, they can't communicate with other people. So I really liked him. I thought he did a fantastic job. One of the other sessions I went to was by a guy named Shane Feldman, who this was really, really cool. Actually Tiffany Anderson, who was our past superintendent, was one of the schools that he went to. He went as an undercover student, and it was the neatest thing because again, he talked about the disconnect and the lack of communication, and there again, not just about parents, but students too. And one of his slogans was mentorship, mentorship can be ten seconds of extraordinary listening. He said that three of the students he got to know within two weeks, one had attempted suicide, one was just the average student that was the teacher's aide and the hall monitor and the office runner, and he said nobody knew that student had been living on his own and supporting himself since he was a junior. Nobody had even knew that about him. And, you know, it just, it was, he was fantastic. I thoroughly enjoyed what he had to say too, and he has an online book, and he comes to high schools and does his presentation, which I would love, because he's just a young guy. He was there, he saw it, and, you know, he said it didn't matter what type of walk of life, all the students fit into the same category, and sometimes we like to categorize who has the most troubles and who doesn't because of the way they live or, or, you know, how much money they have or how much they don't have, and he said he saw it across the board. There, every child wants to be heard and feels the need to have that extra attention. And it's just the society we live in now, you know, growing up, I might not have needed to be heard, but I think our students now, as we saw again tonight, in all schools, need to just be heard and listened to. And one of the things he said, you know, I know how busy we are, but just take five seconds, ten seconds and look up and listen. One of the other things that I went to was called, and this is something ever since I've been on the board, I've fussed about how much waste food we have. And this guy did, he was somebody from Rock and Wrap It Up, and even though our area doesn't host a lot of soup kitchens that will come and pick up food, he was sharing that everybody's so worried about it being against the law to give food that's leftover. He said there's not been one case in America over someone suing somebody for getting leftover food or something like that, which I found to be really interesting. And he said the law states that only you can have a suit if it's under negligence. And he's, but there was a, I can't remember what North Carolina school, but they're a big participant in it, and they take, say, the trays, if they were, I'm just going to throw a tray of pizza that had not been served, instead of disposing it, they put it in the refrigerator. Then they have this Rock and Wrap It Up or the Soup Kitchen, they will come and pick it up, and it's not been served, it's not been touched, and it's been refrigerated, so there's no way of having any negligence, and they pick it up. No, no, we don't always have those people that want to commit to that kind of volunteerism. But I think it would be cool for athletes, our kids after school, if they had the ability. Because there's a lot of kids, there again, whether they're afforded, whether they can't, they're hungry. After school, they can't go home and get fed. I had athletes, I know, after school, they're starving. So, you know, I would, I would love to see somebody take that bull by the horn and run with it. And then one of the cool things that I thought was really neat is we did get to talk to some of the food vendors in that, we're sharing different types of food that they had, and we got to speak with a chef, and that was really, really exciting. And when we had our picture made by the Virginia sign, we got to talk to Prince William County's Board, which all of those type things are so just educational. You want to know the boards are doing and what they're doing in their school systems and, and we're just like everybody else. They all have the same problems we have. You know, they deal with the same issues we deal with, so anyway.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Chobak?
I have one thing just to share, and it may, may seem a little bit old news, because it's a month ago, but I did go to the Board of Supervisors meeting where they discussed our, our budget, and, and it was, I think that went well in general, but a couple of takeaways that I had from that is, for the future, I do think that when, when we do the funding requests and when we add things back in, that I think we do need to be a little bit more rigorous in being able to defend those requests, because there was specific questions that were brought up by members of the Board of Supervisors about some of the things that we asked for that I think didn't reflect all that, that well on our, on our request on that. And, and I think in general, I was a little bit taken aback by what I felt was kind of a distrust, you know, from, from some members, a significant number of members of their board. So I think when we, when we do these, these joint meetings with them, you know, I think we should, we should talk through some of these things, you know, because I don't think, I don't think they mean any ill will towards us necessarily, but, but when there's things that they don't necessarily understand, I think then they start to explain things away like in their own way, and it's not always accurate. And so I, I do think that we need to, the night of communication, right? I, I think that we need, that was a takeaway that I had, that we needed to work on that communication with the, with the Board of Supervisors as well, so that's all I had.
Thank you. And it comes to my shares, and I think I attended WSPA Hot Topics on Safety and Mental Health, and I attended WSPA Blue Ridge Spring Forum, and Henry County Public Schools shared their media relationships, and, and there was an art contest, although I was set to see that we did not send any arts from our division to participate in the contest, so hopefully next time we will. And of course, I was in NSBA. I attended, tried to attend a couple of different sessions, and one of them was on mental health awareness, and the other one is the digital equity, and, and the other two were one of them is deeds and misdeeds of school boards. That was an interesting one. And also board chair roles. So there's always a place for improvement, like in everything else. And also I saw the Mamma Mia. It was like Dr. Meyer said, I think Broadway show for eight dollars instead of two hundred, three hundred dollars. And I know Christiansburg is coming weekend, going to put a wonderful one too, so if you have time, please go and see that. And also the Career Signing Day, it was amazing. I think we increased the numbers. We may need to find a better, bigger place next time when time comes because we barely fit there. And I think that will cover. And of course, this morning, State Superintendent, Dr. James Lane, visited our school in Blacksburg Middle School with also National Teacher of the Year, also is a Virginia Teacher of the Year. He visited with Dr. Lane. So we were in middle school, watching how you do agriculture with, you know, with basically robots, and the sixth grade, sixth or eighth graders are so good at putting together the sequencing and coding and making the seeds to put on little cups, and the, the robot will water them and, and then check the temperature, check the soil, and it was pretty impressive how well they spoke and presented they. And then I remember my child's science project that is a styrofoam cup and it, you know, been, been put in, and then we were measuring with stick, so times change in ten, fifteen years, so it was pretty impressive.
Ten, fifteen. Good, Marty too?
Yes, yes. And Dr. Graham, I mean, Mr. Graham?
Ms. President.
I mean, Ms. Graham. Okay, I'm already getting tired. That's not good news.
Yes.
Marty, Marty, sorry. Go for it.
That's okay. Well, as Ms. Parton mentioned, her and I attended the FFA Breakfast, and Auburn High School cafeteria ladies made a great breakfast, and it was a good fellowship with the farmers and learning about FFA and all the work they're doing at Auburn High School. I also attended Career Signing Day, where we had over a hundred students, and it was really impressive, and it was also nice to see so many people wanting, students wanting to go into teaching. So I'm very excited about that. I hope we can get those numbers back up. The last thing I have is that shortly we will be voting on the operating budget for 2019, 2020. I'm very thankful that we are able to give good raises for the work our people do, especially our teachers. I'm thankful that we are able to add VRS to our nurses, and I think this is quite fitting since it is Teacher and Nurse Appreciation Week. Thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. And that will wrap up our board reports. Board members, as we continue with tonight's meeting, I'm going to ask Ms. Drake to have a roll call to vote for all the other action items we have, I mean, all the action items we have, these are the, going to be coming. Because they relate to the budget and policy, I believe a roll call will be appropriate. Anybody has an objection to that? Thank you. And the next one is school board salary increase.
Yes. This year's operate budget includes a salary increase for the school board members. The proposal is to raise the annual salary to seventy-two hundred dollars, an increase of twenty-four hundred dollars per board member. Additionally, the budget includes health insurance for board members. No actions required to open our health insurance plan for board members. State law requires that you approve a salary increase in a calendar year where at least three district seats are up for reelection. State laws also requires that the increase not go into effect until after the election for those seats occurring. The board has heard presentation regarding this issue since December fourth. Tonight's opportunity to approve the school board salary increase effective in January. Now, do we, we don't do this separate from the budget, is, is that correct?
We do.
It will be separate?
Yeah.
All right, because it's.
So may I have a motion to approve the salary increase, annual salary for school board members to be seventy-two hundred, with the school board chair receiving additional two thousand per year, and that will be effective January first, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any questions?
I just want to make a comment as a board member who originally proposed this and discussed it. I'm sure after the discussions tonight, there are probably some people out there going, does our school board really deserve a raise? For those who don't know, it's a job that earns forty-eight hundred dollars a year. And I, I know just in the last few days, I've spent just about every waking hour I have answering and reading emails. And there were some questions tonight about, for example, should school board members be required to have a degree in education? There's no elected positions really in this country that require you to have a certain level of education. Our legislators are not required to have law degrees, for example. And I think honestly, that would be a bit of a tragedy because that would eliminate so many people from being able to run for public office. Anyone should have that opportunity. Unfortunately, on this salary, it's actually somewhat cost prohibitive for some people to actually do these jobs or even to run for the office. It can cost that much just to run a campaign. So a lot of you know I'm, I'm stepping down at the end of this year, so I'll never benefit from this raise, but for my colleagues' sake, I'm supporting this and have, did propose it because I do think it's something that needs to occur for our school board. The boards around us make two to three times what we do. We put in just as many hours. We obviously deal with difficult, very difficult issues. So for that reason, I, that's the reason I've made this motion and support this.
And also last time we got the increases, two thousand five, six?
Yes, it's been fourteen years.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to put back on. Because it was brought up before Connie got on the board, and it's been, I've been on the board almost fourteen years, and we got a raise, or the board got a raise, the year before I came on, which I wanted to piggyback on the comment about the educational degree as well, because, you know, the four elections I've been in, everybody that I feel like voted for me, I've, I've ran against educators, and they shared with me the fact that being a working parent is just as, it's important because I've got, I had three students in the system at the time, and, you know, most evenings it's six o'clock when I leave my shop, and I get there at eight o'clock. It's a long day. I don't know, I very rarely ever get lunch, so I truly can sympathize, and even though we have great educators, and I've never voted against anything for our educators to get, but I also know how hard it is to be a working parent with kids at home, going to games, trying to get off when the games are at four o'clock and five o'clock, and, and I'm still working till six o'clock. So I feel like I'm a voice for the eight thousand parents out there, or even more than that, sixteen thousand, because if we've got ten thousand students in the system, then you've got about sixteen thousand parents that aren't educators. And so I feel like my voice stands up for those parents, and I, I hope that there are more people that think that way than maybe the comment that was made tonight, so.
I agree.
Any other discussions? So we have already a motion and I think second, so we can have a roll call?
I'm sorry, give me just one moment. I just realized that I didn't add Ms. Graham in. I apologize for that.
Sure, no problem.
Give me just one moment, please.
No problem.
And it may be important to note too, while Ms. Drake is doing that, that we did discuss this previously, in a previous meeting, if people want to go back and.
Multiple terms, not just one, but multiple comment terms.
And I think diversity on the board with different backgrounds is a value, even though I like to see some educators, because when I attend meetings, you know, and meeting the other board members, there are some, you know, retired teachers, retired principals, retired. retired superintendents doing this job, but I don't think all board shouldn't be an educator, then you missed it all.
With different backgrounds.
Yeah, all different backgrounds, yeah.
And we've had that in the past, we've had Joe Iverson, we've had, what, who was his wife was an educator, so, you know, and he was a professor himself, and we've had that diverse grouping of people.
Yeah, maybe we, yeah, yeah, I think the diversity is very important, like we see, you know, we look for diversity in our schools, you know, within our teachers, so it's, it's a value, sorry.
Thank you for your patience, I appreciate it. Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yeah.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Kedarn?
Yes, thank you.
All right. The proposed 2019, 2020 operating budget is a balanced budget, including an additional three point eight million in local funds. The budget includes a salary increase for all employees, nineteen additional positions, BRS for nurses for the first time, keeping our health insurance rates the same. I believe this budget will meet the needs of the school system and the goals of the school board. Tonight, I'm asking you to approve this proposed budget as presented.
I have a motion to approve 2019 and 2020 operating budget as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussions? At this time, I would like to read, you were going to say something? I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
No, that's okay.
I would like to read what Ms. Franklin couldn't be here, because she's traveling, and due to the time difference, she won't be able to participate electronically, but she sent me a little, little write-up. She would like to thank the superintendent and his staff for their work on the budget, she wants to thank all the MCPS employees who attended the meeting, sent emails, made calls, and had conversations, explaining the need to fund this budget. I would like to also thank the Board of Supervisors for their support, and she echoes Chair Todd King's statement that both boards really do have to work together, that's the only way to keep moving Montgomery County forward, to make Montgomery County the best we can be. She fully supports the operating budget 2019, 2020. So, any more discussions? I think we would like to add.
I just wanted to add, I think we're all proud of being able to, to give the, the teachers and staff their raises, I will also add that, you know, in most other years, we're always, we seem to constantly be fighting the, the increase in, in health, health costs, so I'm really happy that, that we were able to, to not, to not have to increase that this year, and I'm also, I'm, I'm proud of, of what we were able to do for the nurses, we, you know, every, every year, we have so many different employee groups that come before us, and, and they make a lot of requests, and, you know, one of the things that I feed back to those groups is, keep coming to us with those requests, even if we can't get to it this year, we'll get to it when we can, and I think the other thing that, that the nurses did that was really good, was that, for me, anyway, that, you know, they presented, they presented a good case for themselves, for, for that need, not to say that other groups did not also have a need, but, you know, between their presentation and our input from staff, I think, you know, that priority bubbled to the top, and I'm, you know, what a great group of professionals, and I'm just so thankful that we were able to do that for them this year.
I totally agree. Any other additional comments?
Yeah, just say, you know, as I'm finishing my, my year, and I look back on the four years, this is the one, one of the things I think I'll be the most proud of, that we've done during my term. It also helps that I get to go out on a reassessment year, if it worked out that way, but yeah, I'm also very excited that we've finally been able to catch up a little bit.
Yes, that's.
With those nineteen positions, too.
That's a lot of positives. If there are no other comments, we are ready for the roll call.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Kedarn?
Yes.
All right, next is the approval of the pay plan, and of course, this is related to the budget, I am very proud of, of our new pay plan and what it looks like, you know, we are, you know, prior, right now, currently, we are number seven in starting pay out of eight school divisions for teachers. Ranking them, number one is Salem, number two, Roanoke City, Roanoke County, Rafferty, either Pulaski or Floyd, and then us, and then Johns, the starting pay, and we have fought for increasing for years to get that right, and to try to be competitive, so what we did, we, we looked at Rafferty's start, Rafferty's pay, and then also their pay at each step, and we, pretty much, our new scale will beat Rafferty out at, at almost every step, which will put us in about every category, number four in area pay, so I'm really excited about that. This will also, looks like it will put us possibly tied for number two, at worst, number three, in starting teacher pay, and so we will beat Rafferty, I think we may beat Roanoke County, and we may be tied with Roanoke City in, in teacher pay, for starters, which is a huge, huge victory. I mean, we're competitive now, guys, and I am so, so excited about that, and, and of course, we'll continue to try to look for ways to move the, the scale up as we move forward, in a way that is in, you know, increments that, that makes sense, in how we do that, but I am so proud of our, our new pay plan, and it's gonna really be a huge advantage as we move forward recruiting the best teachers that we can get, so, so I'm asking for you all to approve that pay, play, pay plan tonight.
May I have a motion to approve our pay plan?
Second.
Motion and second, any questions, discussions? Then we're ready for roll call, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Kedarn?
Yes.
Good job. That's huge. Yes, thank you.
Good conversation.
All right, next, the school nutrition budget, the nineteen-twenty school nutrition budget does not include a price increase for meals, school nutrition employees will receive the same average salary increase as all other employees. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the 2019-twenty school nutrition budget as presented. And Mr. Francis here, if you have any questions about how that might impact how we're moving forward, too, in fact, why don't you tell them where we are with that?
Let's make a motion, and then we'll do discussion.
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve 2019, 2020 school nutrition budget?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second, now we can hear from Mr. Francis, thank you.
It's a good time to give an update on where we are in our processes, too, and how this could, what this means, or doesn't. Right, so what we presented to y'all tonight, it's a budget that's balanced, and that's what you traditionally have, and that's the intent of food services, to be self-sufficient. As we've discussed, we've done the RFP, we expect bids to be back on Friday, May third, on Friday, May tenth, the committee will meet to review them on May the fifteenth, and interviews, if necessary, be held on Monday, the twentieth, and the intent is to present back to y'all on May twenty-first. If for some reason, there's any issues where we've got to follow up with any of the prospective bidders, then we could bring it back at the June fourth meeting. So that gives y'all a real quick update of where we're at.
Any questions to Mr. Francis?
So, this proposed budget, then, is looking forward a year, but with a, kind of a lot of unknowns, I guess, right?
It's kind of a placeholder, to be honest.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, food service by its very nature should be self-sufficient, so any projection you give, you know, we should adjust our expenses if revenues are going up or down accordingly, keep it balanced.
But, but the expectation is that it will remain balanced, because we've had.
Yes, sir, that's the whole intent of the RFP, is that we will be balanced or even higher.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
If, one follow-up to that, if, if we are higher, does that go into, that goes into a fund for food services, does it not, to help offset?
That's correct, I mean, we'll see what the bids are, you know, there's, there's traditionally what's called an admin fee to the company that's managing it, most proposals have what's called a guaranteed amount, so they may say, after we pay all expenses, which would be our employees included, after all expenses plus their admin fee, let's say they guarantee fifty, I'm just using a number, fifty thousand dollars, if that number was actually two hundred, that number goes to the school system, if that number was zero, they would write a check of fifty thousand dollars to the school system, so you would have a floor, and then anything above that goes straight to the district.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions to Mr. Francis?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussions regarding nutrition before we get the roll call? We're good, we're ready for the roll call.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Kedarn?
Yes.
All right, next, policy two dash two point three, in terms of advertising, tonight we're asking you to update this policy to allow some for, for profit organizations to distribute information to students. Current policy leaves out important community organizations, we want to distribute to parents to notify them of opportunities, examples of before and after-school care, spring break camps, summer camps. These are important to parents, and there aren't many places to get this information. Revised policy opens distribution to local, youth-oriented community organizations, for nonprofit organizations like childcare and camps would still be charged a fee, but they would be able to send relevant information to parents, which would also be limited to four posts per year. Tonight, we're asking for you to approve this policy.
May I have a motion to approve the changes to policy two dash two point three as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any questions?
I just, I've looked over this many times, and I just want clarification, partly because I was not here last time. When you say organizations will be limited to four postings per calendar year, what organizations does that apply, apply to?
It applies to, who can help me, what organizations does it apply to, it applies to the.
What, what organizations does it apply to?
The limit to four postings per calendar year.
As, as written, it's for anybody, but I, I would like to note that it says unless a waiver is received by the superintendent or their designee.
So are you saying, for example, a school PTO would be limited to four postings per year?
We would wait, the superintendent would wait.
Okay. And how do they request that waiver? Does it have to do it annually, one time, and it's done? What are we thinking? I'm just curious how it's gonna be, it's not so much how the policy is written, but how it's gonna be enforced, yeah, and carried out.
We'll let Student Services figure it out, we're gonna, we'll, we'll talk about that, how that will be enforced, and how that's, will be carried through, you know, there's some organizations that I would probably just allow my designee to say yes to, like a PTA, PTA.
Would they even have to request it for our PTAs and POs?
The schools, they approve separately for POs and PTA's, separately, what we do in this, in the division.
Okay.
Do they come part, as part of the school?
Yeah.
Okay.
School.
I'm just asking on behalf of the Educational Foundation whether they need to request that waiver?
Yeah.
I mean, no, we could, we can start, create a list of who doesn't have to request it, because it is approved, we'll, it's not gonna, we don't make it hard on anybody else.
I didn't think you did.
Yeah, no, absolutely not, and so we'll, but, yeah, we'll, we'll get that, get that going, just depending on how that looks, but, and we have probably tons of organizations that we work with all the time, but, you know, we, what we saw was, you know, I think we did a good job with the policy, but, you know, I think we missed something here, it's not opportunities, you know, Virginia Tech and Rafferty University advertise with us all the time for their summer camps and that kind of thing, the way we wrote the original policy.
Yeah, but we say just nonprofit, I think that's.
Right, there's people that have good camps that.
So I think we have it right now, and if we don't have it right, we missed something here, we'll come back and bring it again, all right, so.
Any more discussions?
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Are we ready for the roll call?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Kedarn?
Yes.
And just as a quick reminder, if you are not speaking into your microphone, Ms. Graham cannot hear you.
Okay, good point.
Okay, next.
Thank you, Brenda.
So next, the Special Education Annual Plan, Dr. Nelson provided an overview of the Special Ed Annual Plan at the last meeting, tonight, we're asking you to approve the plan as presented.
May I have a motion to approve our Special Education Annual Plan as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any questions? Then we are ready for roll call.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Kedarn?
Yes.
Okay, next, grant proposal for Eastmont Elementary Before and After School Club. The Boys and Girls Club of Southwest Virginia has partnered with MCPS to apply for grant funding to establish before and after-school summer programs at Eastmont Elementary. The project would expand the programs at SMS and EMHS to serve all students in the Eastern Montgomery attendance area. The program will run daily, before and after school, and all day during the summer. It will be available to all Eastern Montgomery Elementary students, and specifically support academically at-risk students. Tonight, we're asking you to approve this grant as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the grant title, Grant Proposal, Eastern Montgomery Elementary School Boys and Girls Club as Presented?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any discussions?
Just want to say, I'm very glad to see Boys and Girls Club coming back.
Yes.
And this is awesome, because working parents just don't have enough choices out there, so this is.
So glad.
Yes, we need to support this as much as we can.
Yeah, I was very happy that it, see it. Any other discussions, additions? Then we're ready.
Okay. Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Ms. Froggett?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Kedarn?
Yes.
Okay, next, policy five dash four point two, this is a first reading. The revisions of this policy allow more time for provisionally licensed teachers to obtain their license and move to a continuing contract status. It also grants the division more time to work with beginning teachers who may be on a plan of improvement in their third year, giving them two more years to continue to grow and earn continuing contract status. Tonight is the first reading of the policy, we'll ask you to approve it at the next meeting. Ms. Whitaker is here to explain why we think this is something that is important.
Could you explain to them what has changed to make this important?
And would you also answer, is this, has this essentially been required by law, or is this something that we've come up with? Some of our policies follow straight on Virginia code, and some of them, we do, so if you'd cover that as well.
Absolutely. So earlier this year, there was a change to the law in Virginia, actually, let me go a little further, further back than that. Several years ago, the state law allowed for us to determine if we wanted to extend the probationary period from three years to five years. Some divisions chose to say that probationary period was going to be five years, some chose three, some chose four, you could pick anywhere in that range. Montgomery County chose three years. Now, this year, there is, July one, there is going to be effective the opportunity that, we could actually go ahead and request them now, but an individual on a provisional license has three years to main, get all of the coursework done that they need to get the full license. For some people, that's a whole lot of work, so they might have ten classes that they need to take in three years while teaching students, and that is a very cumbersome project for them to undertake, and it really detracts from their ability to focus on the students, because they're really working on these assignments for outside coursework. So the state, due to the critical shortage, and probably some of those other issues, is allowing for us to request an extension for individuals that we would like to, that are in a good performance place, they've been with us, their provisional license is about to expire, but they haven't finished the coursework. Previously, they would have just been out of luck, they would have lost the provisional status, and they could not go back again and get that provisional license, if you did not, or get the full license, if you didn't have it done in three years, you were done. So the state has changed that, we can request one or two additional years for that provisional employee to work on the things that they need to do. So we can do that, but our policy doesn't allow us to keep them, because our policy says after three years, you must go on continuing contract status, you cannot be on continuing contract status if you don't have the full license. So it's both, the state law changed what was happening, but because we hadn't upped it to five years, I, we have, actually, I think, two this year so far that we're gonna request an extension for, I can only request that extension if we are allowed to keep them on the continuing contract. that extension if we are allowed to keep them on the continuing contract. The other piece that is attached to this is the opportunity for us to provide additional time for a beginning teacher to perfect their practice. Sometimes, three years is not enough for us to decide if someone can be on continuing contract, or we might not be ready for that. The teacher needs to improve a little bit. At this time, you cannot put a teacher from a regular contract onto a continuing contract if they're not in good standing, which means they can't be on a plan of improvement. So the policy asks that if we see that our teachers need some additional time, that we could request so that we can help them those additional fourth or fifth year in order to help them improve before we put them on a continuing contract. If not, we have to release them from employment and they will no longer be able to teach for us. So those are the two things that are in that policy. It would not be all teachers, just those ones that were either provisionally licensed or those that in lieu of termination, we really want to help them develop and give them that additional time to obtain the continuing contract.
So, just to be clear, the state law limits it to five years, including the extra two years. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
All right, so we're--
But our policy currently limits us to three.
It does.
Correct.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure because that means that we're giving ourselves the maximum that we could--
That we could.
Under state law. So we're giving ourselves maximum--
Yes.
Flexibility.
And I believe, I wasn't in Montgomery County at the time, but from conversation across the state at that time, the school divisions that chose not to go to five years did so because they didn't want it to, their teachers to perceive that they were making them take a longer time to get on that continuing contract. You know, they wanted to say, we're going to, we're going to get you that continuing contract as soon as we can. But at this point, I see a need for us to look at that so that we can really provide the best service to our teachers.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, policy 6-6.2. This is a first reading. The revisions allow MCPS to award locally verified credits for students with disabilities seeking a standard diploma. Tonight's the first reading of the policy. We'll ask you to approve it at the next meeting. Mr. Polly, Dr. Nelson are here. If you have any questions, any one like to give any background on that. Dr. Nelson?
Good evening. Dr. Lane, the Superintendent of Education, State of Virginia, on November 30, allowed a new pathway for students with disabilities. That includes 504 students as well, a pathway to earn a standard diploma, a little bit different than the way they have an opportunity now to earn it, and that's through locally awarded verified credits. Currently, students with disabilities who score between 375 and 399 on an SOL can apply or the school will apply locally awarded verified credit. Now, the new pathway says that if a student falls below 375, we now have an opportunity to put a school-based team together and the student will develop a portfolio and then they will present that to a school-based team, which will include the admin of curriculum, the principal, the teacher of record, special ed, a plethora of other people. They'll go through the portfolio, they will make the recommendation to the school board, to your school, and say, yes, we think the student earned this credit. Then we will meet as a school board team at school board level, go through the data and approve it, and then I will submit it to the state. The state has to look at the data and say, yes, we think this child earns it. They respond back to the school and they either approve it or deny it. So it's been a great pathway for students. We already, to date now, have, I think, seven kids who earned verified credits that way, earning, being able to earn the standard diploma in June. So we're pretty excited about this.
So it's essentially an alternative assessment? You're allowing you to use an alternative assessment instead of an SOL?
So they're not really calling it an alternative assessment. It's the same type of a system that we reduce for the locally awarded credit, only now they would kind of put a portfolio together of the work they're doing. They still have access to the general ed, nothing is adapted, nothing is modified. It's the whole curriculum, the teacher has to present all of the grades and whatever assignments needed to be done for any student and say, yes, he does know this material, we just can't seem to get it on that SOL test.
So they still have to take the SOL.
That's right.
But if they don't score the 375, then they have this option--
That's right. So automatically, we disqualify them in the past and now this won't disqualify them.
Any other questions to Dr. Nelson? Yeah, I'm glad. I think that stuff will be wonderful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, board members, the next item will be our unfinished business. Any matters of unfinished business you would like to discuss?
I guess, I'm going to briefly respond to the, to some of the stuff that was said during, during public comment. And I'm going to build on something that you guys brought up under a different thing. But, you know, the idea of, excuse me, the idea of what our role is and whether or not we need to be experts in education. I used to think that, and the first time somebody suggested to me that I run for school board, I brushed it off that way. But I, I think that the most important thing that we do is to be representatives of the public. You know, we kind of sit between the public and the staff and administration of MCPS. And, you know, I take that role seriously. I think that it's one of the most important things that we do. It's accountability, it's, it's information. I mean, I think there's a lot of times, because we're involved in some of the things that we do, and the public may come to us with a request or a complaint or something like that. And sometimes, if we need to push back, we can give them more information, we can educate them. That's kind of the conduit going the other way. But sometimes, it does need to go from the public through us, you know, to, you know, all the way to administration and staff. And that's, of course, what Dr. Meyer does for us as the board. And so I just did want to say that, you know, that I take that role seriously. I think the rest of you do too. I do think that it's important that we, that we rebuild trust with people who we have lost it with. And I think that some of the steps that, that Dr. Meyer is taking with the students right now is going a long way to doing that. So I applaud you for taking those, taking that action. And I do just want to make sure that I, once again, you know, I feel the need to just let our staff know that, you know, we do care about them and we, you know, we have the best interest. I've been telling people that we have the best interests of the students when there is, when there are decisions to be made and we have to make them. The students come first, right after that is the staff, you know, and then after that is the community too, you know. So all these people that spoke, I mean, definitely the students, the parents, community members, you know, we care about all of you and we will, you know, we will do what we can to get things right. So. I did want to add also one other thing that I did in case some of, I should have said this in my board reports, but in case some of you guys haven't read through all of your emails, I did want to point out that I got to a point where I just had to write up a big response that, you know, not a canned response, but I just couldn't sit there and type a personal message for all the emails that I was getting. And I did, some people, I think, were asking if they could post it on social media and things like that. And so just to make sure that people knew that it was coming from me, I went ahead and posted it on my Facebook page. So you guys are welcome to go out and read that. And that, that helps, I think, explain some of the things too, that, some of the things that we can't do and a little bit more, I'll say, some detail on the processes anyway. So I just wanted, especially the board, to know that that's out there.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just, I want to thank everyone that came out and spoke tonight, particularly those who did come out with strong, positive comments. I think that's the best thing that can happen right now. And I am attempting to answer every email personally because this is occurring. Blacksburg High School sits in my district. I used to work there. My children had Mr. Kitts as principal and I worked for him. I was incorrectly quoted tonight. I've known him for 15 years, not 20. But the one thing that was said, in addition to what I mentioned about the school board, was the comment that public education in this country is struggling. I don't take that as an insult to me. I take that as an insult to our students and our educators because I think in many ways, public education is stronger now than it has ever been. And it is to their credit that it is. And at the same time, you know, our administrators and our teachers are having so much more put on them that was not put on them, even, you know, when some of us were growing up and going to school. A lot of these things that we deal with now, we did not deal with even 20, 30 years ago, such as mental health issues. We feed so many children now that we didn't use to feed, that just simply went hungry. But you can't learn on an empty stomach. And just so many things we've put on our teachers, not to mention all the standardized testing and the accountability that has come across the last few decades. So I do take exception with the idea that public education is struggling. I would agree, it always needs improvement. Everyone always needs improvement. And hopefully, what will come out of this is improvement and a better system. But thank you very much to everyone who spoke.
Yeah, I definitely very passionate about people talking passionately about public education and coming forward when we do things wrong. But I want everybody to come and speak about when we do things right as well because there are so many great things happening in the school system. And then you won't read those on the media, you don't see those on the newspapers. Like the primary example this morning, when, you know, State Superintendent visited, National Teacher of the Year visited, sixth graders, eighth graders, it's an amazing presentation. But are we going to see that Roanoke Times front page tomorrow? Probably not. So that parts bothers me. I like hearing people, I like talking when I'm in a grocery store or listening to complaints. I do not mind. I take it seriously. I spend so much time. It's more than a full-time job for me and I do it with, you know, pride and very happy. But I wish, you know, people pay the same attention when we fight for budget, when we talk to the supervisors, you know, when we fight for our teachers' race, when we, you know, try to add all the other staff for VRS and insurance and this and that. But then, you know, we always talk to the empty, empty room. I don't know how many people watches the YouTube later on, but I would like our room to be filled, like, you know, whether it's for, you know, improvement or complain. But I hope sometimes it's for the good things too. I see my job is actually educating the public, you know, to understand public education. And if people pay more attention, you will know the policies, you will know that what we can say, we cannot say. I mean, it's just paying attention, what's going on in the public schools is part of the problem or part of the solution.
And I will give a shout out to Lisa Bass from the News Messenger, who is still sitting there.
I know.
Did not get up and leave when the public address finished.
Definitely appreciate it. Any other questions and comments? Any more unfinished business? Then we are moving on new business. Any new business that you would like to bring it up? Then we are moving on announcements and information. Any announcements and information you have? Please attend the Christiansburg High School show.
Yes, show.
I know it's going to be great and I think they have probably Friday and Saturday, 7 o'clock and Sunday afternoon.
Sunday matinee.
You know, I'm not 100% sure, but sounds like it's going to be great. We have so many talented kids. I mean, that's, that's for sure. If nothing else, the second, I mean, the next one is upcoming school board meetings. And you'll see that we have May 21st meeting and we're going to be in the boardroom. So when we discuss the policies, we'll be able to be still on the YouTube later on if you won't attend the meeting. Unfortunately, I won't be able to be here. And depending on Ms. Graham's availability, hopefully Ms. Froggett will be able to jump into cover. And I have to attend my almost daughter-in-nose graduation ceremony. And if we don't have any other questions regarding agenda, we're ready to enter the closed session.
We will have to add the MCEF presentation that night.
Yes, and I'm so sorry that--
That's okay.
It has been bumped--
The meetings were long enough.
It has been bumped quite a bit and I'm sorry that I'm going to be missed after all. But before we get into the closed session, Ms. Franklin has asked to participate in the tonight's closed session electronically as she was out of the town and couldn't do it earlier. May I have a motion to approve her participation electronically, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any questions? If not--
Is Ms. Graham going to stay on?
Ms. Graham--
You'll need to call her. So we'll need somebody to volunteer to call Penny and someone to volunteer to call Ms. Graham--
I think--
When you guys get in the back.
I think we can, we can handle that.
You'll want a speakerphone so that everybody can hear everything.
Yeah. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Our next order of business now is entering the closed session. May I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss employee matter as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of Code of Virginia?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Now we are in closed session. Thank you, everyone.